I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, with equal liberty and justice for all. Kim, I'd ask you to call roll, please.
Harleen Kane here, Ray Echopee?
Here.
Bill Lukens?
Here.
Martin Meyer?
Yes.
Bob Nelson?
Here.
Sam Powers?
Here.
Ron Richards?
Here.
Allison Ritter-Bush?
Okay, thank you. We do have a forum. I'd ask for the council to make a motion to approve the agenda and again, I'd remind everybody on the council that there is a conflict of interest for anyone on the agenda with any of the items that we would be considering tonight. I'd ask that you would notify the council prior to voting.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda for tonight's meeting.
Seconded.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we approved the agenda for tonight's meeting. Any questions, comments, or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The agenda is approved. You have in your packets say minutes from the last council meeting on the 5th of November. I'd ask for a motion to approve those minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the November 5th council meeting.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we approved the minutes from the November 5th council meeting. Any comments? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. You also have a copy of the bills in between in your packages for $182,988.95. I'd accept a motion to approve the bills in between.
I'll make a motion to approve the bills in between of $182,988.95.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the bills in between. Are there any questions, comments, or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. You have also current claims of $205,190.45. They are listed in your package. I'd expect to motion, or accept a motion to approve those current claims.
I'll make a motion to approve current claims of $205,190.45. Second the motion.
It's been moved and seconded. We approve current claims. Are there any questions, comments, or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The current claims are approved. This time, we move on to communications from the public. Are there any communications from the public? Seeing none. We will now move on to the next item in the agenda, and that's the, to open the sealed bids for eight animal cages that we surplus at our last council meeting. We did receive one sealed bid and we'll open it at this time. And we have a bid for $10 for each of those, and they're interested in all of them. It's Michelle Brock from Stars No Kill Rescue and a number is given here. What I would like to do is ask that we refer this to public safety and admin finance to review and ensure that we'll be able to accept this bid and to be able to ensure that we still want to get rid of those cages.
Mayor Cotty?
Yes, go ahead.
Do we have to accept the bid? The reason I ask is since we put them up for sealed bid, looking at the bills in between for tonight, Barnyard Veterinary is $1,546.04. The city's budgeted for $300 a month for barnyard vet. And looking at the bills, the majority of that $1,500 comes from boarding of cats, boarding and then turning around and euthanizing them. If we're getting in a situation where we're having that many cats, those cages were originally used for holding the cats. And I just wonder if we need to rehave that conversation as you talk about in public safety.
And that's why I want to refer that to public safety and then to admin finance to look at that. I think there's been made, some adjustments made as to when we put those animals in barnyard vets, which helps keep the cost down, but I think it bears another look. So, thank you for bringing that up.
Thank you.
Moving on in the agenda, we look at the personnel actions A through D. I'd accept a motion to approve those personnel actions.
I'll make a motion to approve personnel actions A through D.
Dr. Dunn?
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we approve the personnel actions. Are there any questions, comments, or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Those actions are approved. Moving on in the agenda, committee reports, administrative and finance. Bob?
The next administrative and finance meeting will be December 3rd, 1:00 at City Hall.
Okay, thank you. Airport Advisory Committee, Bill?
Next meeting will be Thursday, November 29th at 8:00 a.m. at the airport.
Custer Fall River Regional Waste Management District, Ron?
Custer Fall River Regional Waste Management District met on the 8th of November 2018, 7:00 p.m. at the Hoover Center. The only thing we brought back of interest from that meeting that night was the tire cleanup that they went through. And there were not service, 133 tires, 133 tons of tires. We'll get back to you on that. He said it was a big pile.
Probably tons.
It was?
I don't think so. That's tires I saw out there.
Yeah, but all they had written down was the number of 3-3s. Okay. Had exact succession for contract negotiations with manager of the landfill out there. Those are still under discussion. Should be final in December. Discussed, boarded, and accepted new tipping fees out there, which will take effect on July 19th. That's for the commercial haulers that contacted the city, so we may see something, we may know. Next meeting is January 10th, 2019, at the Mueller Civic Center at 7:00 p.m.
Okay, thank you, Ron. Downtown Historic Preservation Commission, Harleen?
The owners of the burnt-out pizza presented the commission with their plans regarding the continued operation of their food trailer in Hot Springs. The commission expressed its general agreement with their plans, but told them they must work with the city regarding permits and operating licenses. If and when they intend to change the use or appearance of the property on which the trailer is located, they will present an application for certificate of appropriateness to the commission. There were no new applications to consider. The next meeting will be December Wednesday, December 5th, 5:00 at the library.
Okay, thank you, Harleen. The Evans Plunge Advisory Committee, Allison is not here, and I believe the meeting was canceled. Parks Recreation, Beautification, and Cultural Development, Marty?
Parks Committee met on November 6th at 3:00 p.m. at the Mueller Civic Center. Due to various circumstances, it was lightly attended by Jared Colligan and myself. The agenda items were tabled for the next park meeting, which will be December 4th at 3:00 p.m. at the November 6th.
Okay, great. And I'd just like to remind everybody too that everybody is invited to the Freedom Trail ribbon cutting ceremony. We're going to be having that on the 29th of November. The ribbon cutting will be at Chautauqua Park, but a refreshment ceremony afterwards at Evans Plunge. And this is a big deal. We're having a Wellmark representative onsite to, that did provide a grant to assist in that. And what a wonderful addition to our Parks Recreation, Cultural Development, Exercise, Trail Systems. So, really appreciate all the work that has gone into making that happen. And thank you, Marty. Planning and zoning commission, again, Allison is not here. Public Safety, Bill?
Our next meeting will be tomorrow, Tuesday, the 20th, I think tomorrow's the 20th, 20th of November at 2:00 p.m. at City Hall. And this is a change in day of the week. We normally meet on Wednesday. I thought we'd have better attendance if we didn't meet the day before Thanksgiving.
Thank you, Bill. Public Works, Bob and Ray?
Public Works met on November 13th at City Hall. Mayor Cotty, Ray, Allison, Kim, Tracy, Scott, Sean, Haley, Steve Alexander, Donald Sted, Keith Nagabauer over there. Some old business to update you on. The change, a change in the request for proposal for workforce housing has been recommended to increase the market range from 120,000 to 180,000, to a market range of 120,000 to 200,000. And that request for proposal is on the agenda tonight. So, when it comes up, I'll mention again that we'll be requesting a change in the upper limit of 180,000 to 200,000 for that request for proposal. Water sewer rates, water and sewer rates, the first reading of Chapter 21A wastewater and storm sewer water, and Chapter 26A water codes are on the agenda for tonight. The asphalt patching that was going on a couple of weeks ago, that's been completed. And a thank you to all the city employees that helped with the preparation work with the streets for the patchwork. Couple new business items. Keith Nagabauer, Nagabauer, the follower of water users spoke to the committee regarding their current water contract that will expire August 1st, 2022. Currently, they pay $2.15 per thousand gallons of water, which is 80% of the city rate. They would like the city to consider a five-year contract versus a 20-year contract and reduce costs per thousand gallons along with a minimum monthly rate. Discussions will continue on that. Mayor Cotty received a letter dated October 23rd, 2018, from the South Dakota Department of Transportation regarding the design change for the Highway 385 reconstruction project. Quote, "From a full reconstruction to a mill and overlay from Jennings to Medicota, so as not to diminish the potential for a future cannibalistic sidewalk," end quote. South Dakota Department of Transportation requested, quote, "If the city has any concerns with the above-mentioned approach, please provide those concerns by November 20th, 2018," end quote. Public Works is recommending the city not agree to a mill and overlay proportion of Highway 385 from Jennings Avenue to Medicota Avenue. The SDOT approach would not resolve safety issues that will result because of the reduced, with the city sidewalks along the North River Street Business District. Would also require an additional construction project for that section of road where the asphalt overlay needs to be replaced with concrete. The city will continue to work with South Dakota Department of Transportation to try and convince them to include this cannibalistic sidewalk in the Highway 385 reconstruction project. The next Public Works meeting will be November 27th, 3:00 p.m. at City Hall. Ray, do you have anything?
No, no comment.
Okay, thank you. Southern Hills Economic Development, Marty?
Shedco Board Meeting on October 26th was at Woolies and focused on Shedco's HASA Grant, which was approved by the South Dakota Department of Agriculture. Meeting was attended by quite a few special guests. Todd Anderson, who's the electronics instructor at Western Dakota Tech. Brian Mitchell, who's an instructor in environmental engineering technology at Western Dakota Tech. Dr. Kelsey Murray is the head of Department of Environmental Engineering at Western Dakota Tech. Brett Owens, professor of agriculture engineering at South Dakota State University. And the grant is a specialty crop block grant. HASA stands for hydrothermal applications for sustainable agriculture. And SDSE partners with Shedco in the grant, which is written for a prototype of a hydrothermal greenhouse that can produce a predictable, consistent crop year-round. Exciting to see input from all of these people that are in the field of agriculture, discussing the advances that they're making in hydro product projects that they've been doing. They're very excited and on board with the hydrothermal project. They discussed how agriculture is the number-one economic driver in Fall River County, and talked about diversification of value-added ag opportunities in the state. And after the meeting, they adjourned to Edgemont, a field trip, and met with Katie Brunson, who's beginning work on the prototype for Shedco. There was also discussion regarding the importance of these type of projects when you look at maps and they discuss food deserts and how there are, in rural states, oftentimes in small communities, you have limited or no access to fresh produce. And with the aquaponics, they have a system which is 10 square feet which can produce enough produce to sustain a family of four. So, this was exciting to hear the comment by the South Dakota State University engineer Brett Owens was that when you consider food deserts, this solidifies a necessity for groups like this to be pursuing these kind of projects. So, that was an exciting time in addressing some of the work moving forward on that grant. On October 31st, Shedco hosted the Second Annual Southern Hills Economic Development Summit, which is also known as Sheds, not to be confused with Shedco. Sheds is a collaboration of economic development and other business professionals from six communities, Hermosa, Keystone, Custer, Edgemont, Hill City, and Hot Springs. It provides an opportunity to discuss regional marketing and to learn more about each other's communities. The early morning breakfast meeting featured a presentation by John Woodhead of Williams &amp; Kramer, a Missouri-based development company specializing in the construction of workforce housing. And I believe Mayor Cotty was in attendance at that meeting. There was a great article, if you haven't had a chance to, look at the Fall River County Herald. The November 8th edition discusses the meeting with Williams &amp; Kramer about workforce housing. They are also interested not only in helping communities with workforce housing, but they also talk about the possibility of building a facility to build homes somewhere in the region. And just a bit of a piece of information from the article, they talked about a site that would provide factory-built homes for a surrounding service area of 500 to 600 miles and place 75 to 100 people in all phases of home construction process. The construction plan itself could potentially be in the ballpark of $15 million, Woodhead said. It produced 300 single-family homes per year and 200 multi-family units. So, definitely corresponds with the current need for workforce housing. The meeting was also attended, the Sheds meeting was also attended by Jofiala and Laura Frederick of the Governor's Office of Economic Development. Sheds featured an impressions tour after the morning session. It's a tour of businesses that are unique to Hot Springs showcasing some of our unique business features which help attract and retain visitors in Hot Springs. On Monday, November 5th, tech schools were presenting at the Hot Springs High School. It's part of the Build Dakota Road Show. All four tech schools were represented. Mitchell Otech, Lake Area Otech, Southeastern Tech, Western Dakota Tech. Shedco in conjunction with the Build Dakota Scholarship Program spearheaded an evening event following the day's events at the school. And this was at the Mueller Civic Center. Thanks once again to the Mueller Civic Center staff for their cooperation in this event. Build Dakota Scholarship strives to keep young people in state by offering full ride scholarships for high-need workforce areas. Healthcare, health services ag, automotive, building, trade, construction, energy technician, engineering tech, IT technology, and computer information systems, and also precision manufacture and welding. And a stipulation of the scholarship is that you work in the state for three years. Representative from Mitchell Otech commented that it was one of the better shows they have done. He referred to the communication between the parents, employers, and tech school reps. Shedco's principal for setting up the event, contacting, inviting all employers and school reps. And the evening also included the scholarship application completion session at the end. The next Shedco Board meeting, never have that right in front of me here, is, that will be on December 21st, a Friday, at Woolies.
Okay, thank you, Marty. A lot of things going on. Just a couple of comments. First of all, we appreciate the work Shedco's doing in the affordable housing arena, and we'll look forward to working closely with them to get that spurred in our community. And the other thing, I just had a contact from Save the VA today, a member of that committee, hoping that we can get that hydrophonic greenhouse closer to Hot Springs as a transit A. Another greenhouse closer to Hot Springs has a transition area for the VA people going through their programs as a transition out of treatment into society. I think it would be a boon and a help for us keeping the VA. And I would hope that we could accommodate that, too. Southern Hills Golf Course Advisory Committee, nothing to report. Volunteer Fire Department, Ron?
Volunteer Fire Department met 13th of November. It's the Hot Springs Volunteer Fire Department, 7:00 p.m. New business was setting up for the parade, the lights on 30th of November. Smoky bears expected to make appearance. All the radios for most of the fighters, handhelds, portable radios, those should all be in system by the week of the 19th of November. Big one, they're going to start really ramping up their training on structured fires. It seems the Hot Springs Volunteer Fire Department is covering more of Fall River County all the time. They feel there's a need to ensure all volunteers are trained to a high level, in the interest of safety for the fighters and the public. Jeffrey Wenland was selected for a one-year probation as a firefighter. He has 13 years' experience with the Southern Fire Department. He should be young. And work is continuing on the grants for the new fire engine. Projected cost is $400,000 plus for the truck, and projected responsibility of the Hot Springs Fire Department will be somewhere between $20,000 to $30,000.
Good to be there.
That's in the works. Next meeting, 11th of December, 2018, 7:00 p.m. at the Hot Springs Volunteer Fire Department.
And Ron, thank you very much, and we certainly appreciate the recruitment efforts of our fire departments. Seems like we've had a lot of new people coming on board. And I'd ask that you relay our thanks to the city, to our, and the fire departments doing in that area. Comprehensive Plan, Sam?
I'll do an update.
Okay, thank you. Moving on in the agenda, we have some ordinances that we need to consider. First readings. The first ordinance is Ordinance 1194, and that's a supplemental appropriations ordinance. And for that, obviously, we have a budget every year that we operate on, but budget is just a plan, and every year, there's contingencies that require minor adjustments. And so, there's some need to move money around to cover those minor adjustments. You should have a copy of that ordinance in your packages. I would accept a motion to approve the first reading, Ordinance 1194.
I'll make a motion to approve the first reading of Ordinance 1194, supplemental appropriation ordinance.
Seconded that.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the first reading of Ordinance 1194. Are there any questions, comments, or discussion? Hearing none. I'd ask Kim if you would call roll, please.
Harleen Kane?
Yes.
Ray Echopee?
Yes.
Bill Lukens?
Yes.
Martin Meyer?
Yes.
Bob Nelson?
Yes.
Sam Powers?
Yes.
Ron Richards?
Yes.
We also have two additional ordinances, 1195 and 1196. 1195 is the wastewater and storm sewer revision, and 1196 is the water code revision. They're somewhat tied together, but we will consider them differently. I just want to point out that in getting these ordinances before you, our wastewater, Water Department, along with city staff, under the direction of our city administrator and finance officer, meant to go over these with a fine-toothed comb, and came up with the recommendations that you have before you. So, I guess what I'm trying to say is they came from the bottom up to really look at the ordinance and every aspect of it. And it's important that we do, we have not had a rate adjustment for several years, and it's important that we make that rate adjustment at this time because we've got some big projects coming before us with the road construction and utility improvements that have to be made during that construction. And without being in a structure that adequately fits the parameters to receive financing or possible grants, we need to have a rate adjustment. It's a small rate adjustment of 1.9%, which basically, for the water, is about a 35 cent on the basic tap fee for most of the users. And it would increase about six or more cents, six or seven cents, depending, through the years, as that six or seven cents per gallon based on usage. So, you have, I've seen a copy of that, I think it was placed in the last, the last council meetings. You should have had an opportunity to go through those. I just wanted to let, use the council and the public know what we're considering here with these ordinances. So, I'd accept a motion to approve Ordinance 1195 at this time.
I'll make a motion to approve Ordinance 1195, Chapter 21A wastewater and storm sewer revision.
I'll second it.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we approve this first reading of 1195. Are there any questions, comments, or discussion?
I have one comment. On page 14, when I provided my comments, I forgot to include a comma. So, after, I think it's after rubber and before impervious, there should be a comma, so that we are not combining rubber and impervious.
Okay. Are there any other comment, I mean, comments? Thank you, Bill. Hearing none. I'd ask Kim if you would call roll, please.
Harleen Kane?
Yes.
Ray Echopee?
Yes.
Bill Lukens?
Yes.
Martin Meyer?
Yes.
Bob Nelson?
Yes.
Sam Powers?
Yes.
Ron Richards?
Yes.
And you also have Ordinance 1196, and that's the water code revision. And I'd ask for a motion to approve that at this time.
I'll make a motion to approve the first reading of Ordinance 1196, water code revision. Second?
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. We approve that ordinance. Are there any questions, comments, or discussion? Hearing none. I would ask that Kim, you call the roll, please.
Harleen Kane?
Yes.
Ray Echopee?
Yes.
Bill Lukens?
Yes.
Martin Meyer?
Yes.
Bob Nelson?
Yes.
Sam Powers?
Yes.
Ron Richards?
Okay, that is approved, and those second readings will be looked at at the next council meeting. Moving on in the agenda, we move on to resolutions. We have before you item A, Resolution 2018-18, and this is a resolution to approve a part-time person at our library clerk position, beginning the 1st of January of next year. And again, just some background on this request. It's been requested by the library, our head librarian, department head, and also recommended by the library board to include this position. Last council meeting, we tabled this, thinking that we could maybe use a contract position, and it's found that that would not be possible to do, so it's back on the agenda as a part-time position. And the library staff has gone through their budget, reduced other areas to fund the program out of their, their, their set allotted amount in their budget. So I would ask for a motion to approve Resolution 2018-18 at this time.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2018-18, a resolution to approve a new part-time library clerk position to begin January 1, 2018, 2019, establish starting wage of $10 an hour, not to exceed one year.
I'd second that. Okay, it's been moved and seconded to establish that position, and again, note the motion included the words "not to exceed one year." Are there any questions, comments, or discussion?
I have some comments, Mr. Mayor.
Sure.
First of all, I want to acknowledge the effort that Dawn and her team has done in addressing the many questions regarding this position that the council has posed. And secondly, acknowledge the fact that our Hot Springs Public Library was ranked, I believe, 15th in the nation within our budget category, and that speaks for itself the quality of the library. When I was going around getting signatures to run for city council, one of the persons that I first met urged me to protect our library. And as I've reviewed the budget we approved in 2019, I believe that the council has indeed done that. Regarding this vote, I personally cannot support the addition of a part-time position at this time, simply because of the budget impact. I understand, or I believe I understand, the need. It's been well communicated. Each department head worked very hard in compiling a 2019 budget that was then passed by this council. Cuts in the existing line items have been identified by Dawn and her team that would fund the position for 2019. However, a good portion of those cuts are considered one-time cuts that really couldn't be done year after year, and so they couldn't be expected to be seen in 2020 and beyond. Adding a position for even one year can have an unintended consequence of that position being relied upon in future budget years, without the benefit of knowing where that funding will come from. So if, if revenue and expense realities change in the future, I'm certainly willing to reconsider my position, but given the current realities, I will be voting no, but I wanted you to at least understand where I'm coming from on that.
Thank you for your consideration, Mr. Lukens.
Are there any other comments?
Yes, I'd like to make some comments. I added the "not to exceed one year" to the, to the resolution, because as we discussed this at public, or at Admin Finance, that's what was discussed.
Yes, it was.
For a one-year trial period. And I echo what Bill said, as far as appreciate the efforts that you made to try to find the money to fund this position for 2019. One thing I have trouble with, and it may seem very simple, is cutting professional services as far as carpet cleaning. You can cut it for one year, but it's gonna need to be right back in the budget for next year. Carpets in public places, there are health risks. Just looking at them, can be troublesome. So I appreciate the cuts that you've made, because we asked you to, and the last meeting we had, I said that you did what we asked you to, and I felt it was important to, to support your efforts doing that. But as, as Bill said, going forward, I think these, these costs are gonna come, come right back up, and you're gonna have a new position, and the budget's gonna be right back up. I'm gonna watch that very closely. There's a lot of expenditures that we see on a monthly basis from, from the library that, you know, you look at sometimes, you know, well, maybe they could come back there a little bit. But when, when the departments proposed their budgets and said, "We did a lot of pencil sharpening, and we're lean and mean," and then when you want a position, you come back and say, "Well, we, we can get more lean than me to fund the position." I told you I would support your effort for a year, and I'll honor that, but I do have reservations, and I'm really gonna be watching closely to see that this works the way that you said it would. Thank you.
Thank you for your consideration, Mr. Nelson. I would like to put out to the, the council and the, the audience that I have here, that based on the circulation numbers, amount of books that we, that we circulate, and the amount of people that visit our library in the course of a year, there, I have several sources, which I presented to the Admin and Finance Office, but it recommends that we have a staff between five and eight people. And we're working that with a staff of four right now. So I don't think that this extra employee situation's gonna go away. I think that it's gonna be in the conversation for the next months to come. We, we need someone else. We're not getting our work done in the back rooms like we need to do, because we're waiting on our customers, which is our first priority. So thank you for your consideration for whatever you decide to do this evening, but we are going to continue to ask for more help at the library. Thank you.
Thanks, Dawn. And I also want to remind the council that many of the customers at our library are from outside of the city limits of Hot Springs. And even though the residents of Fall River County pay a small fee, it does not cover their share of using the library. So if we are going to add this position, and one of the things that we're looking, we'd be looking at is increasing dividend revenue, it might be who of us to approach the Fall River County Commission and see if they would be able to come closer to providing their fair share of support for our wonderful library.
I do have, I do have some numbers for that, although I didn't bring the exact numbers with me. Based on our budget last year and the amount of cardholders that we have, everyone should be paying approximately $45 a month, or a year, for their card. And based on the percentage of the county cardholders that we have, they should, the county's share of that should have been a good $60,000 this year. They have very generously offered us $20,000 again, that I can go collect after the first day of the year. But that would be the, the difference that you're looking at. Every year, that changes a little based on the cards and what our budget is, but last year, their contribution should have been closer to $60,000 rather than $20,000. Thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments? Hearing none, I would ask Kim that you'd call a roll on this resolution, please.
Harleen Kane?
Yes.
Ray Echathy?
No.
Bill Lukens?
No.
Martin Meyer?
Yes.
Bob Nelson?
Yes.
Sam Powers?
Yes.
Ron Richards?
Yes.
That's five to two.
Okay, the motion does, does carry. And again, thank you for being here, Dawn, and being available for comment. And Bill, thank you for your in-depth comments. Appreciate the discussion. Moving on to our Resolution 2018-22, this is a resolution that goes hand in hand with 2018-23, which is item C on the agenda, to establish top of scale for a city maintenance foreman and a city maintenance superintendent. And again, this is done to establish a second in the chain of command in our maintenance operation. In the absence of our maintenance supervisor, who's billing, there really is no one officially that is in a position, that is in a position of leadership that would, would take charge, or if there are, crews are split on, on jobs, we don't have a, an actual, actual foreman. And so we would ask that the council would establish that position of a maintenance superintendent, and that would be filled by our cur, what we call a maintenance foreman, and then we would fill the maintenance foreman from within the maintenance internally, from within the city employees. I would accept a motion then to approve, a motion on Resolution 2018-22.
I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution 2018-22, resolution to establish top of scale for city maintenance foreman.
I'd second that. Okay, it's been moved and seconded to establish that resolution. Are there any questions, comments, or discussion? Go ahead, Kim.
I would just like to make it clear that we're not hiring any new bodies. We're gonna be filling these positions from within, just so that we have the authority structure that we need in case of missing superintendents.
Okay, any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And then again, I'd accept a motion to approve 2018-23.
Make a motion to approve Resolution 2018-23, resolution to establish top of scale for city maintenance superintendent.
Second? Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we establish this position. Are there any questions, comments, or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to new business, item A, we have a possible motion to, and discussion to accept the resignation of Sarah Jamison from the library board, and as a replacement to report, to appoint Cheryl Huddleston to fill her term through June of 2020. I've discussed this with Cheryl. I think she's an excellent choice, and she is eager to serve on the library board. I'd accept a motion to accept the resignation and appoint Cheryl Huddleston.
I'll make a motion to accept the resignation of Sarah Jamison from the library board, and appoint Cheryl Huddleston to fill her remaining term through June 2020.
Okay, moved and seconded to accept Sarah's resignation and appoint in her place Cheryl Huddleston to certainly remain there through term. Are there any questions, comments, or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. You have before you item B, which is a motion and discussion to accept a petition, a petition for the water district in the second, Manicotta Edition Cottage Grove Edition, to supply water to that area near and around Doran Road and 25th and 26 Streets. You do have a package of that in your folders, and that petition, there are a total of seven landowners in that area, to get a 75% that's required by our ordinance. Six of those have agreed to that, and again, this is that area north of the state home. The estimated cost, as you've noted in your package, is approximately $79,000. And so what we're doing with this motion is to accept a petition for that. So I'd accept a motion for that at this time.
I'll make a motion to accept the petition for a water district in the second Manicotta Edition Cottage Grove Edition for the supply of water north on North 26th Street to the Doran Road right-of-way and east along an alley to 25th Street, to be known as the 26th Street Water Distribution System Improvement District.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we accept that petition. Is there any questions, comments, or discussion? Again, hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now, what we need to do is to, as a part of our ordinance, is to set a public hearing. So item C is a motion to set that public hearing for the December 3 meeting at 7:15. I'd accept a motion to do that at this time.
I'll make a motion to set a public hearing for the proposed resolution of necessity for the assessment of properties located within the proposed 26th Street Water Distribution System Improvement District for 12/3/18 at 7:15 P.M.
I'll second it.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we set that public hearing for the 12th, or for the 3rd of December at 7:15. Any questions, comments, or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And again, I remind the council and the public that this water district has become affordable with the advent of using a wheel to dig those ditches as opposed to the jackhammer that we, that has been used in the past. And that cutting wheel should cut the cost down to where it is affordable for those living in that, that area. So I want to thank our city engineer for looking and coming up with that method of construction, which should pay dividends. And again, this obviously gives us an opportunity to provide water for more of our residents here in Hot Springs. Moving on to item D, you have before you an RFP for workforce housing, and again, these are, this is for the city-owned lots on Canton Avenue. And I just want to go over a couple of highlights before I ask for the motion. We've had some interest from a developer, from a individual company that does pre-cast concrete, some individuals within our local community to build some workforce houses on these lots. We did want that change from that range, as Bob mentioned before, up to $200,000. Before, we had capped the value of the homes at $180,000. We thought with inflation that that would be a more reasonable cost. The city will provide sewer and water to those lots. The individual in this RFP has four years to complete the construction. If they don't complete the construction within that time limit, those lots are turned, returned to the city as is. And again, that gives them a little bit more time to... to accomplish, uh, their, their work. We're looking for a cash bid price. We want a proof of liability insurance of a million dollars and references and a proposed, uh, uh, concept. We will have a panel review those, uh, RFP submissions. Uh, that panel will be myself, our Public Works, uh, Head and Vice Chair, Bob Nelson and Ray Ekoffe, our city administrator, our, uh, city engineer and our developmental coordinator. And what we will do is grade those, uh, submissions on acquisition plans. That would be 20% of the weight of that grade, the quality of design, 40%, and the impact on our meeting our housing needs of 40%. So the individuals will have an opportunity, or the companies that are bidding on this will have an opportunity either to provide single-family homes or dual-family homes. And, uh, I think, uh, Bob, you have some wording that, uh, we would want to add to this motion concerning the, uh, uh, amount, the, uh, time, uh, and where these bids are to be turned in, so that be clear for the public.
Yes.
So I'd accept a motion to approve this RFP with the additional wording.
Make a motion to approve the request for proposal for workforce housing for the city-owned Canton Avenue property. The city will receive written proposals at City Hall, 303 North River Street, Hot Springs, South Dakota, 57747, until 12 PM, February 26th, 2019. The proposals will be opened and publicly read aloud at the February 26th, 2019 Public Works Committee meeting at 3 PM at the Hot Springs City Hall, 303 North River Street, Hot Springs, South Dakota, 57747.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we approve this request for proposal with the addition of, uh, where those proposals and when those proposals are to be turned in. Are there any questions, comments, or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We move on to Item B. Uh, we have a, a long motion there before you to authorize our finance officer to use, uh, some of our existing restricted city funds to establish, uh, some better interest rates and gain, uh, the city a little bit more income concerning the rates. And you have a sheet with those funds listed in your packages. Funds like the Evans Plunge Debt Service, the Cemetery Fund, and then the, uh, funds associated that we're saving up for the, uh, highway reconstruction from lighting to, uh, utilities. With these changes and the, uh, increase in interest rates, we, uh, calculate that we can gain an additional $42,000. So this is a pretty significant, uh, opportunity for the city of Hot Springs. And I want to thank, uh, Misty, our finance officer, for doing her due diligence and work on, uh, bringing this before the council. I would ask for a motion, uh, to approve, uh, those, uh, establish the new CD accounts.
I'd like to make a motion to authorize the finance office to use existing restricted city dollars to establish new CD accounts. Evans Plunge Debt Service Reserve Funds close existing WF savings and open CD 17 months at First Interstate. Cemetery Perpetual Care Funds close existing BMW savings and open CD 17 months at First Interstate. Withdrawal $505,000 from Wells Fargo Checking. Fund 212 restricted for US Highway 385 reconstruction and open CD 12 month at Wells Fargo. Withdrawal $450,000 from Bank of the West Checking Fund 602 restricted for improvements, US Highway 385 reconstruction and open CD 12 months at Wells Fargo. Withdrawal $600,000 from the Bank of the West Checking Fund 604 restricted for improvements, US 385, Highway 385 reconstruction and open CD 12 month at Wells Fargo.
Okay, thank you. Do your second.
I'll second it.
Okay.
Ted, I thank you once again, Sam, for the, the longer.
Yes. Didn't even get tired.
Okay, we've got a motion and it's been seconded that we make these changes in our, uh, savings accounts, uh, CDs. Are there any questions, comments, or discussion?
Are the interest rates on this, could you raise for at least the existing rates?
I believe those are the new rates.
These existing restricted.
Yeah, the, the package that you have. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. You have in your packages a, uh, a letter that, uh, I drafted to respond to South Dakota DOT. Uh, their letter dated the, uh, 23rd of October. Bob gave a very good summary of, uh, what, uh, they requested of us, that they want to put a mill overlay along River Street uh, from, uh, Jennings to Minicotta. Uh, there have been several things that have happened since that letter, uh, was received. First of all, uh, we've had, uh, Representative Kristi Noem elected as our governor. She has made a, uh, recent statements that she supports, uh, Hot Springs being named a Veterans Town uh, for the nation and America's Veterans Town. And we believe that with that will come support to, uh, help, uh, give, uh, our veterans a walkway to walk on along, uh, River Street. We, uh, we also, uh, have looked at, uh, a different way of, uh, suspending the, uh, walkway, the cantilever sidewalk. Rather than using a beam, uh, configuration as we did before, we want to use a suspension-type configuration, which would considerably lessen the impact on the roadway. We feel that we can put that beam, that, uh, suspension system within six feet of the flood wall. And plus, the, uh, suspension system will not touch the flood wall. And so what that would do would eliminate, uh, one of the concerns from the Army Corps of Engineers and should make it, uh, easy for us to be able to, uh, coordinate with them. With those changes, uh, we also found a, uh, very interesting point of discussion when we were discussing this with the composite, lightweight composite, uh, company that, uh, would provide the, uh, composite decking for that sidewalk. They had done a similar-type suspension bridge in, uh, in South Carolina. And, uh, I want to read a TripAdvisor that, uh, came from Greenville, South Carolina. It's up, this bridge crosses Falls Park on the Reedy River. And it's very similar to our Fall River. A very, very, uh, nice place for people to go visit. But one of the, uh, TripAdvisor comments was that Falls Park is simply a must-visit stop if you're near downtown Greenville, South Carolina. "We love taking in the beauty from the perch on the suspension bridge, walking along the well-laid-out pathways, dangling our toes in the water at the basin with our children and people watching. You could easily stay for three or four hours." And that's exactly what we're trying to do with, uh, this cantilever sidewalk and fixing up the river to allow pedestrian access. We've got a place where people can gather and hopefully dangle their feet in the water for three or four hours and then come and walk River Street and, uh, spend time and additional money in our downtown area. And, uh, that along with providing, as Bob said, a safer environment because we've got a wider traffic lane for the busy truck, truck traffic that we will not be able to get rid of. So with that response, uh, I think, uh, we don't view the mill overlay along River Street as a suitable alternative. We hope that, uh, we can continue to work with South Dakota DOT. Uh, they are adamant that, uh, something needs to be done in the 2020 timeframe as the pavement along that area is failing. And, uh, they, uh, are willing to work with us and not, uh, uh, cut us out of having a cantilever sidewalk. However, uh, we feel that, uh, we would, uh, rather work and I believe that we can incorporate, uh, suitable design within the, the time constraints if we diligently work to, uh, to do that. So with your permission, I would accept a motion to approve the response, uh, uh, to the letter that, uh, you have before you in your packages.
I'll make a motion to approve the response to South Dakota Department of Transportation letter dated October 23rd, 2018, prepared by Mayor Cotty. Response indicates that the city does not view the mill overlay option along River Street as a suitable alternative to the Highway 385 reconstruction project.
I'd second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we approve the letter. Uh, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. And again, I want to thank the council. I think it's important that we send a unified voice from our community, uh, concerning this. Item G on the agenda is, uh, to set a public hearing for the application for temporary alcoholic beverage license for the chamber to be used in conjunction with their Christmas mixer.
I'd make a motion to set a public hearing on December 3rd, 2018 at 7:10 PM to act on the application for a temporary alcoholic beverage license from Hot Springs Chamber of Commerce to be used at 801 South 6th Street on December 20th, 2018 in conjunction with their Christmas mixer.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we set that public hearing for the, uh, 3rd of December at 7:10. Are there any questions, comments, or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Move on to reports. City Administrator?
I'll keep it close tonight, a little bit short. Um, just been busy working with, uh, new ideas for suspension sidewalks, FAA requirements for height restrictions and rating zoning ordinances. Uh, we've been busy, uh, doing, uh, putting in a new landscape plan. Um, the, the front bed at the library had filled in with dirt and weeds. And we just needed a refresher. The soil was unsuitable for actually growing living things. Uh, so we removed the old soil, brought in some new soil, um, kind of created a dry riverbed and, um, landscaped it. That was primarily, uh, with the help of our water and sewer, uh, individuals, the staff there. They did a great job with, uh, a lot of crying and weeping. It was rather sad, but the project turned out great. Um, I've done, I'm a landscape architect by trade and I've had 15 years working directly with my own crew. And I always had to shake my head that they could never understand how to bury rocks properly. And these guys got it on the first try, so I was really proud of them. But stop by and see it on the next time that you're up to see the library and let us know what you think. Uh, there are going to be some flowers blooming, a lot of grasses and native plants. Uh, other things that we're working on, we're still trying to get some CAD drawings finished, uh, for, by the end of this month for, uh, the DOT reconstruction plan. And that would include, uh, things like trees, areas of, um, colored painting that we've been able to get quantities that they're willing to give to us as equals. Just other things that we need to do to make the, the streetscape, uh, more pedestrian-friendly and more suitable for a long-term downtown, um, that, that is our, our life center. So that's, we've got a lot of things happening. Uh, would love to see you all at the ribbon-cutting of next Thursday, the 29th, at 4 o'clock. Uh, we'll be meeting, just park in the back parking lot by Evans Plunge. We'll be meeting at the extension for the Freedom Trail right across, um, I think it's Coldbrook Avenue at that point. And, uh, it's a beautiful little trail. It'll be just getting dark, so we'll have some flashlights and lanterns for everybody. And, um, it's just a really nice time to celebrate, uh, another positive thing in Hot Springs.
Great, thank you, Kim. Maybe we could have candles. We could walk along the.
There you go.
No, it's a great, uh, great addition and appreciate, uh, everyone's work on that. As far as my report, uh, again, I want to thank the council for the support on the, uh, request for proposal for workforce housing. I appreciate the council's involvement in making plan. Hopefully, we can see that plan come to fruition. Uh, we've got, uh, some interest. Uh, we do have, uh, thanks to, uh, Kim's work, uh, as a city administrator, Shetco's work in, uh, getting a developer interested in building homes here in the Southern Hills. And I hope that we can take advantage of that and, uh, certainly, uh, solve that issue within our community. I did have an opportunity last week, uh, last Thursday to meet with, uh, the government, Governor's Office of Economic Development, uh, representatives, uh, both Joe Fiala and Lauren Frederick came down. And, uh, one of the things that they did provide us with was a, a, a local, or state, uh, in-state engineering firm that, uh, we've contacted and we'll be meeting with them tomorrow to see if they can, uh, possibly do the design work on our cantilever sidewalk. I'm hesitant to come to the council and ask for a huge sum of money to do the design work if we aren't, don't have some assurances that we'll get some additional, that we will get the funding to build the thing. So, uh, hopefully, uh, we can work something out with this engineering firm to, uh, to at least get some concepts that we can present and, uh, be able to get some assurances that, uh, we will get that design funded. Also had a state, uh, an opportunity to visit the state home last Friday. I, I'm very impressed with, uh, Superintendent Brad Richardson and the work that they're doing up there. They've developed a master plan. As a part of that master plan, uh, they're also working on establishing land for workforce housing. And, uh, so again, we want to work with them, Shetco, and, uh, those that would be willing to help us in that area. As far as the airport environmental assessment for the peat lean mining, uh, we have had some correspondences past week, uh, some questions. So apparently that environmental assessment is moving on. We do have a phone call with the FAA tomorrow morning, so, uh, we'll, uh, keep, uh, pressing to ensure that that gets done. As you know, the income from that mining has to be used at the airport. And it gives us an opportunity to provide, uh, much-needed additional hangar space. And, uh, also if we are fortunate enough to land an airport mechanic to, uh, to help us fund that. I have not heard back from our potential mechanic, but we're still, uh, trying to, uh, court him to come, uh, become a part of our Hot Springs community, part of our Hot Springs Airport. Also, uh, as I mentioned, again, appreciate your support on, uh, approving the letter and answer to DOT. Uh, our working relationship has not been adversarial. But, uh, we need to, uh, keep working together. And hopefully, with, uh, our new governor on board, we can, uh, get some push for some funds. If Deadwood can get $4 million to build a downtown square, I don't see why America's Veterans Town can't get, uh, a, a large sum of money to build a sidewalk for veterans to walk on and others too. So, uh, we'll keep, uh, keep pressing that. Uh, I think that, uh, also, uh, is a big challenge for us as a community as we look forward. Because if we're going to be touted as America's Veterans Town, there's some things that we need to do within our community. Just for example, uh, do we have enough rooms for people to stay in? If, uh, we're going to attract more people to come visit Hot Springs as a result of that? And what other things can we have for people to do to occupy their time? what other things can we have for people to do to occupy their time while they're here? So we're looking at opportunities to, we need to be looking at opportunities to expand the functions of Evans Plunge and its healing waters and other opportunities within our community. And it's an exciting challenge to be looking forward to in the future. One other thing, I'm going to be asked, I'm going to be attending these state tours and conferences in January. And I think that gives us an excellent opportunity as a community. There's many that attend that event, including the governor. I hope to have opportunities to talk with Governor Noem at that time, along with the Department of Tourism. Because our cantilever sidewalk and the work that we want to do to Fall River is also a tourist attraction. And so we want to make sure that we get that department of our state government on board. And I hope to have some opportunities, spend some face-to-face time with people at DOT. And finally, this is the week of Thanksgiving. And I can honestly say I'm thankful to have had the opportunity to serve as the mayor of this fine community and work with the staff of our city. I think we have a lot of professional people that work here. And particularly with you as a council. You've been very professional and done your due diligence and hard work of investigating the issues that come before this council. And although many of the votes are exactly unanimous, it doesn't just happen that way. There's a lot of discussion, fact-finding that goes on to make that. And I really appreciate the efforts that you've done. We live in a wonderful community. We live in a wonderful nation, and we need to be thankful. And I just think it's a good way to end tonight's meeting. So I'd ask for a motion to adjourn.
Welcome to adjourn.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded that we adjourn. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, meeting is adjourned. Do a break.